Very general, for his appearance at one of our networking meetings which Janet Salazar and the Public Relations Committee had put together. At the end, I said that we had heard rumors about proposed changes in cuts and we would like to discuss it with him at some point. So at that meeting, Mary Norton and Catherine White and I, along with Maher Nasser from the Department of Public Information, met with a special assistant to the Deputy Secretary General. At that point, things were explained a little more in detail, but what the message was, was this was the budget that had been submitted as of that Monday, which would have been 9/8, the seventh. So, in a sense, the budget had been determined entirely in the Department of Public Information, had been sent to the Under-Secretary General for his okay, without any input from civil society at any point in that respect. And so, we were, in a sense, told that this is a fait accompli, and that, you know, this is what we live with. Mr. Nasser assured us that all of the coverage that we presently had would be continued, even though we would no longer have a NGO relations staff person who would be our key person, and the rest of the staff would be incorporated into a section that would be headed by someone at that point who actually hadn't come on board yet, but had been hired, and hired specifically to do the job of special events and advocacy, and had, as we learned later, some experience with NGOs, not a real experience with NGOs. So, we were concerned that we were facing a position of diminishing results within the Department of Public Information. So on the 24th of January, the Executive Committee met and had a long discussion about what to do, how to move forward. And it was at that point that we voted to send out a letter to all of the 1,400 NGOs. So I assume that if you're affiliated or accredited with DPI, you receive that letter, which in a sense tried to set out, in as neutral a tone as possible, the ramifications we saw in relationship to that. And I have some additional copies of that letter up here, in case you didn't receive that letter per se. In respect to that, we were asked by the Executive Committee to, if I would meet with Cyril Ritchie, and Cyril, if you want to raise your hand here, is the president of Congo, which is the group that of NGOs associated with ECOSOC at this point. And so Cyril and I met, and as the Executive Committee dealt with the letter, he also dealt with the letter, so that the letter that was sent out reflected the position of the Executive Committee and the Chair of Congo at that point. I received about 90 replies back, and given my sense of community organizing, 90 replies is a pretty good reply. Eighty-eight of them said, "This is outrageous, what can we do?" And two of them said, in effect, "Suck it up, this is the reality of life, let's move it." So, we were dealing with that as our background at that point. So, on the 28th of February, at our last Executive Committee meeting, we'd asked Maher Nasser to come and make a presentation, and he did. The presentation was about 45 minutes long, and at that point, we got some more details from him, in terms of what he saw as our role ongoing within the Department of Public Information. After he left, we had a meeting of about an hour and 15 minutes of the Executive Committee, and if any of you were there, I apologize to those of you who we sent out of the room when we went into executive session, I didn't realize we would be in executive session for as long as we were. But out of that came a directive to us to send a letter to the Under-Secretary General, explaining our position, and, in a sense, suggesting that we saw two avenues that we could go if, and if you were interested in that. That was sent out on Wednesday, so we haven't gotten a reply to that, but each of you received a copy of that letter, in terms of our response to him. So, at this point, there is a second issue that has arisen, and that is a possible conference. And so what I would like to do is to spend the next 45 minutes listening to each of you about what you think are ongoing, if you think we should carry this any further, how should we carry it further, in terms of our response to having the NGO relations person or that position cut? And then, at about five after two, we'll turn our attention to the possibility of an annual conference. So, if any of you have questions, or if any of you have comments that you want to make, we invite you to come up to the podium here and address the assembled people. Are there any people who wish to -- please, Cyril, you want to come first, and then the young woman behind you?
I'm Cyril Ritchie, the President of Congo, and I thought I should simply say a word of confirmation and support. We are Congo and the DPI NGO executive, of course, very long-term sister and brother organizations, with rather different mandates, and since the Congo mandate is above all helping to secure and expand and guarantee the access of NGOs in civil society to the debates and the decision-making of the UN system, when I learnt of this, first of all, from many NGOs, and then directly from Chuck with the texts that he and you were at that stage preparing, I too felt outraged also by the procedures, which are remarkably paralleled by something that happened in Geneva last year, where I am based, and we also learnt of a major new attitude to the holding of the NGO Resource Center from the corridor discussions. And this seems to us totally unacceptable for NGOs that have a status of whatever sort with the UN. The very least that we can expect is that we will be properly informed, properly consulted, and that once consulted, when we put forward our views, they will be given suitable attention. So, I was therefore very willing indeed, and we were actually having a Congo meeting here at those very days, when the letter was sent out to your 1,400 affiliated members to put my signature at the bottom of it, in support of the principles that you are standing for in this, and we will stand with you on this as going ahead, because this also is creating a precedent. And that's one of the things that you know probably only too well, that the UN and ambassadors love precedents. And, of course, if it's a bad precedent, they will leap on it perhaps even more avidly than leaping on a good precedent. So we must do what is possible collectively to ensure that this does not become a bad precedent to be followed elsewhere.
Thank you, Cyril. Please. And if you'd just identify yourself.
I'm Marjorie Kohn, I'm a longtime representative of the League of Women Voters of the United States. The League was one of the first NGOs in 1945 that came to represent part of the charter when it says "We the Peoples." That's how the NGO community got started. I wonder if he knows that, or if they know that, maybe it should be brought to their attention, that we are "We the Peoples" representatives. And I would also like to know, maybe it's in that paper and I haven't read it, how is this going to change in terms of, are we still going to have weekly briefings? Are we still, you know, I understand the conference is under discussion here, but what about the weekly briefings? And what about all the NGO organizations and community work, how will that be affected? So those are my two big questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva, you'll be next, but we should put some of this conversation also in context. The reason that the NGO relations staff is being reduced is that Marie Luisa is retiring at the end of July or end of August, so it is her position that is not being filled, and that it's not being filled because of budget cuts that have been recommended at that point. That's the first thing. The second thing is Gail Binley Taylor is retiring at the end of April, end of May, I think, and will no longer be with us. Marionette Abadella, who is also in the office, is a part of a rotation, and so she, this is, in a sense, an apprentice that ship she has, so she'll be leaving. So that, the only person that may be staying with us is the Secretary, Crystal McGinnis, so that we are indeed darned that if all of these new people go into another section headed by somebody other than an NGO person, that we will indeed lose our clout, because they will not have the history that goes with us in that respect. So that is, in a sense, what I'm trying to say to you. The other part of it is, we've been stymied because we have nothing in writing. And so, we've been told that all of these services will continue. How they will continue with a new person taking over Gail's position, and the head of the advocacy and special events, person being the only other person with primary experience, how those briefings are going to continue remain a question. And so there has been some rumors attached to the fact that maybe the briefings will be more electronic rather than in person. So those are the kinds of issues that we don't have an answer to at this point, but we are concerned about. Eva?
May I just say something?
Please.
Sorry, may I just say something? First, I want to --
Mike.
I think it's a long -- hello?
No.
What I'd like to say, first of all, thank all of you for coming, but I would like all of you to know, for me personally and for my colleagues here, no one has done a better job of pleading your case than Chuck has. He's been on top of this, I cannot tell you, he's asked all of the questions, but what I would like to hear from you this morning, because we have had your questions, what are going to happen to the briefings? I particularly am concerned what are going to happen to the communications workshops. So I think it would be helpful for us if you could tell us how life will be different for you when the status quo changes. What does your NGO get from being part of this committee? So if you provide us with your concerns, even more so than you have, but specifically what your organization gets from these briefings and from what has been going on since 1968, it will be very helpful for us and for Chuck, who's leading the charge.
And I would simply like to add to that, where can we go from here? Those are the kinds of things. I have some ideas, but I want to hear from you first, before I impose my ideas. We'll go first to Eva, and then to Jerry.
Hello, I'm Eva Richter, from International Federation of Business and Professional Women, and I really appreciate Cyril Ritchie's remarks, thank you very much. I know that the whole process has been very, very questionable, and I really do appreciate your leadership, Chuck. I know you've been in there fighting for us. And also, Catherine, I understand what you're saying, but I think we need a little bit of information still before we get to what we can do now. And one of the questions that I have is that I have noticed recently that the DPI itself seems to be changing its function. And I noticed particularly at the CSW this year, that there have been three workshops, which were not briefings in the kind that we've normally had briefings, but actual panels on things like small arms and so on and so forth. And I wonder where the DPI is going, and therefore, that will impact the participation of the NGOs. What are we now expected to do if we no longer have the usual structure of Thursday morning briefings and, you know, a joint kind of session, but they're going off on their own with events that are freestanding events? What are their plans? How does that impact us?
Thank you, Eva, for that question, and we have also explored that with the people in upper administrations such as Maher and Jeffrey, who's coming on board to assume that responsibility. And we have been assured that these things will continue, such as the weekly briefings and everything that we have had so far. So that's what we can offer to you, is what has been told to us. But just to reiterate, we have not seen an organizational chart. And we have been talking among ourselves, and I think part of that is, is because everyone at upper administration is still trying to figure out this new configuration of people, and how they're going to work, and how these budget cuts are really going to affect them. And from what we understand, the final round of budget cuts and the approval of the budget will be in December. And I think, Frances, you probably are in a better position to explain that. However, DPI has been asked to cut at least $100,000 from their budget. So, we look at all of these things, this is what we're trying to cope with, and trying to be advocates on behalf of the NGOs, and be realistic. And Chuck and I were talking yesterday, and we were saying, if we allow cuts to occur now, and the hole exists, the hole will always be there. If we fight for it and we somehow try to fill that hole, this is the time to do it. So it's an interesting experience and extremely challenging. So, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Janet?
Also, in addition to what Mary just said, we recently forwarded a formal letter to Peter about our inquiries and stance about all these issues, and one of the strong points that we put out there is that if indeed we will not have any choice or eventually a say as far as their decisions as a result of the budget cuts, then we would like to, you know, exert all our effort to make sure that the majority of the responsibilities of Jeff, in this case Jeff, who's taking over Marie Luisa's position, is centered on taking care of NGO-centric efforts, you know, like our briefings and all these things. I'm very concerned about what I heard from Eva, and if these are events, standalone events that they're doing, and there is a valid concern in this one, and we'll make sure that we're, we will bring that up to Peter, Peter, Jeff, and Maher. This is the importance of us talking right now. That's why this town hall meeting is very important, because we want to really hear from you. You are our partners here, we all are NGOs, and this is a very critical moment for us and as your representatives, as the Executive Committee, it is very important too, that we hear directly from you. So, as we talk, please feel free to just come on over and say whatever you want to say. So this way, we know the pulse of our NGO partners. Thank you.
Jerry?
Yeah, Jerry Spivak, Communications Coordination Committee for the United Nations. We've asked to say what we think maybe we could do, and I think possibly we should all learn the lyrics of Les Mis, and then march over to the UN and take over the halls. Now that's one possibility. I think that we have to, in fact, be able to think of all types of possibilities. I don't think that we should be thinking about what we're allowed to do. I think what's happening is that, over here, the people that represent us have been left out of discussion. And the reason that I'm concerned is that the person who headed my organization, Harry Lerner, who passed away a number of months ago, what he worked on for years at the United --
------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------
Hello, everyone. I'm Deborah Amoldow, I represent the World Peace Prayer Society, which is a DPI NGO for a long time. And I've been working very closely with DPI on the International Day of Peace for about 15 years, not with the NGO section, although, you know, of course, I've also had lots of dealings with the NGO section. And first of all, thank you very much, Chuck, really, for your leadership in this time of change. You know, that's what's needed, and thank you, Jerry, for that excellent history lesson. But I think one of the things, really, that we need to look at in terms of history, is that we are in a moment of change, and DPI is just one of the aspects of the United Nations that's in a process of renewal right now, just as so much of the world needs to be. We don't have a single domain in which institutions do not need to be reconceived from top to bottom, and hopefully, bottom to top. So I think this is a moment of opportunity for us, and I would like to see us look at this from the larger perspective. And thank you, Jerry, for opening door. One of the things that strikes me about what DPI is doing is this change of language to advocacy and special events. And I was quite struck by that, because for years, our community has been pushing back against the term NGO, because it's not something, non-governmental, as though being governmental was such a wonderful thing, that non-governmental. And often, we like to be referred to as civil society, which gives us much more of a feeling of the partnership of many people around the world who are part of all kinds of organizations and groups that are not non-governmental, they just are, they're just human. But I was thinking, what do NGOs actually do? And what we really do at the UN is advocacy. I like that. I mean, I think in a way, that defines us in the way that we want to be defined, which is that all of our organizations represent something, some good that we want to bring forth in the world, some need that we see that should be addressed here at the United Nations. And the way that we do that at the UN is through communication and through special events. So, I'm not entirely opposed to this new direction of DPI. They are under the gun, so to speak, the twisted gun, to make changes and to make themselves a leaner, more effective mechanism for the UN, and let me say right here and now that they need to do that. I don't think anybody in this room would say that DPI was operating at top efficiency, am I right? So, I'd like to see us, what I would like to see is for us to be in better partnership with DPI. So for me, the big issue here isn't the changes that they're making, but the fact that it didn't occur to them to bring us into the process of making these changes. And this is something that we can suggest, that we can offer ourselves, as particularly the Executive Committee, which is already nicely organized for that purpose, to be able to help them reconceive their relationship with the NGO community, so that it can be better in the future. Having Thursday morning briefings, I think, should not be our goal. I think the briefings have been useful, and that there may be, there may be a way to have these briefings in the future that is even better. And maybe it is electronic, and maybe it's not so much for the community of those people who are here in New York and can attend them, but really geared more toward reaching civil society throughout the world. And maybe the conference also can be done in such a way that people have access who are not in the room, and that can be less expensive, more streamlined, require less DPI personnel time and effort, and have more impact in the civil society community all over the world. So, from my point of view, I really see this as an opportunity. I would rather not see us storming the barricades, because I don't want this to be oppositional. I think we are in a position to offer ourselves in partnership to DPI. You know, they're wonderful people, right? You had good meetings already, you'd get all the information that you should have been entitled to, but we have cordial relations with the people in DPI, and I think we can build on that, to really be partners with them in reaching out to "We the Peoples" of the world for a more effective civil society and a more effective United Nations.
Thank you, Deborah. Would you come up, please? Identify yourself.
Hi, everyone. I'm Erna Coffino from the National Space Society.
Use the microphone.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Erna Coffino, National Space Society. We had this happen to us in Washington, lobbying wasn't allowed anymore, so we turned around, we made ourselves educational. Advocacy is a very political word, and maybe we lobbying, do a reverse here, take the suggestions of everyone -- suggestions of everyone, but more importantly, most of us have friends in key positions at the UN, doing specific things. In fact, we all do more than our organizations in areas. And we could assess who we know, what we do, put ourselves in committees and pockets, reporting to Chuck, who's doing a fine job, and become useful in a way to turn it around. Whenever you're faced with a budget situation, you can turn it around and find some use for what you want to do, so that you're supplying your organization with what they want, but you're also turning the key at the UN and making them look, because they're spreading themselves. And there have been reports on this done by people at the UN. And so if we become more efficient, and we tell you what we do, who we know, whatever, you're going to start to put something together that's quite interesting.
Very good. Thank you. George?
Good afternoon. I'm George Hayes. I'm with the World Corrosion Organization. Chuck, thanks for putting this together, and thanks for your advocacy. I'm rather... We're a new organization. We've only been here for about four years. We've noted, I've noted, a significant change over that period of time in the subject matter of the briefings. And when we first came, we had a lot of briefings that were directed, put on, sponsored by our various NGOs. As the last few years have gone, the briefings have been, seem to be completely put on by DPI. The subject matter has been of questionable interest to a large group of people. The complaint I've heard from DPI is attendance is down. You've got to get attendance up. Maria Luis has said this two or three times in the briefings, that people are not coming. And it seems that the dialogue was lost in putting the briefings together. We're here to network, and briefings are a good time to network. But if people aren't going to come because the subject matter's not of interest, or the venue has been canceled, or the date has been changed at the last minute, those people who have busy schedules can't always make the change of dates and this sort of thing, we don't have a structure that is sufficiently standardized in order to get everybody here from the local area. There are more people in this room today than I've seen at some of the briefings, the recent briefings, and I'm glad to see the interest level. Thank you.
Thank you, George. I think one of the things that we have been facing is that, since construction has begun at the United Nations, our ability to access headquarters has been reduced dramatically. When we used to have the briefings in the Doghammer Schold Auditorium, we were able to go upstairs to cafeteria and to continue those discussions, continuing the networking that we did. And it brought more people to the event and perhaps encouraged more cross dialogue that was there. Today, when we meet in headquarters, it's in the North Lawn Building. We've been asked not to go to the delegates' dining area on the second floor. It means, then, that we really disperse, unless there is a meeting in the afternoon at the Church Center, where people will then congregate and go to at that point. So some of these issues have multifaceted parts to it. When I look at DPI, I have to admit that I carry a bias in that I know that the work of the NGO Relations, what used to be a cluster and is now called a section, the people there are there from morning to night, and the work that they do is quite extraordinary. My concern was that when the budget cut was announced, it was solved unilaterally and in a way that made it easy. In other words, if you cut the position of NGO Relations Chief, you go a long ways toward meeting your budget expectations. I, for one, do not believe that there was any discussion about the impact that that would have on the NGO community after that occurred. And my concern now about having a person come in to head up the Advocacy and Special Events Section of DPI is that person was hired as a result of a job offering that said nothing about NGOs. So that the person who is, we've met, we like, he certainly seems eager to learn, his name is Jeffrey Brez, but he has limited NGO background at this point. And at this point, given what's happening to the rest of the staff, it seems to me and to others that this is a real Donnybrook kind of situation, that if we don't have strong leadership that is familiar with NGOs, that we will indeed have a diminished effect in this area. The other thing that has been brought home to us is the fact that DPI now feels that we should be more involved in the ongoing process. It's interesting that that should occur after we had not been involved in the earlier process. But by that, I think what they mean, and again, this has not been spelled out to us, but they seem to feel that we need to take a more proactive involvement in the activities of what had been the NGO Relations Cluster. And that is an interesting concept for us, and it may well indeed be an important thing for us to figure out how we can do it. I'm still concerned about the loss of a key person for us to communicate with. Jeffrey has been brought in because of his background, partly in terms of media. And when we talk about advocacy and special events, there is an important component of Hollywood that's involved in this process. And so I know that he will be on the road a part of the time. I don't know how much of the time. Mahar tells me there is no money to travel, but they continue to travel. So I'm not sure where that comes from. And I'm not trying to make fun. I'm just trying to say that there's so much uncertainty about where we're headed. Two of us, three of us, actually, on the panel come out of academic circles, and we are used to having cuts made. But it's, those cuts, once they're announced, there is a process that people undergo to understand what the impact is going to be on the programs that are involved in those cuts, and attempt to make sure that by the time the announcements are made, that there is a pretty good plan put in place. And what I am reacting to is the fact that we cannot get, in writing, any plan that they have involved for us in relationship to where we're going. And it seems to me now, we're three months down the line, we're told that the person who was hired to head up the Advocacy and Special Events Section was hired... That letter went out in December, right after Juan Carlos retired. There was plenty of time to involve us in the process so that we could get somebody who would be primarily oriented to the NGO community. So I'm really on the horns of a dilemma in terms of where we go and how we get there. Yes, please.
Hi. My name is Marilyn Berkman. I represent the Women's National Book Association. My concern is whether NGOs that are associated with the DPI will fade away altogether, because my understanding is that to be accredited, to be associated, you have to fulfill a role that's two-way. You have to bring things to the UN, but you also have to educate people in your association about what the UN is doing. Now, I know the National Book Association, we have a UN corner in our monthly newsletter, and also always UN News in our national newsletter. And if we don't have access to briefings, if we don't have access to conferences, in which networking is very important, because, as Chuck points out in the letter, it's only at these conferences that bring disparate groups together that we can learn how to achieve our goals. And if we're being cut off this way, then I suspect there won't be NGOs that are going to be accredited, because we won't be able to fulfill the requirements.
Thank you. Please.
My name's Valerie Tekavek. I'm with the Autism Research Institute. And we are a very new NGO. We began in May. And this is, of course, very interesting for us to be witnessing and going through with all of you as a new NGO, because our learning curve is already steep, as we understand the history, United Nations, and how NGOs have functioned, and then with it, this new challenge of restructuring and reorganization. One of the things that seems to stand out to me the most in this discussion is that, yes, indeed, there is contraction of some kind happening, and it's around a budget. But there seems to also be a long history of principles, the third pillar, and how can we work together to uphold the principles and help the UN not suffer a loss? Because if they are operating in contraction and not extending dialogue, that's a contraction that I perceive that may actually not serve the UN proper as a larger organization. And so I would imagine it's up to us to help the UN understand that they don't want to lose something very, very important and very dear to the process of the world and human beings coming together as civil society. So that's my little piece.
Thank you. Fannie?
Thank you. My name is Fannie Munnlin, and I chaired the conference in 2003. And the organization that I represent is the National Council of Negro Women. And the founder of my organization was in San Francisco in 1945. So we have a long history with the UN. One of my concerns, I have two concerns. The first one is that Chuck was not a part of the conversation about the restructuring of the Relations Outreach Department of the UN. The second is that through the effort of all of us in here, and I'm sure you all remember when Mr. Bolton was ambassador to the UN from the US, that said, "The 38th floor, if we just chop that off, the UN would be fine." And we have been in the rears in paying our dues. And just a month ago, there was an article in the New York Times which stated that 70% of Americans feel that the UN is vitally important. Now, we need to tell the people at the UN who are cutting that budget, through my organization and all of our organizations, we have advocated... My organization is an advocate organization, because when we go to Capitol Hill, we cannot say we're lobbying, because right then you lose your tax exemption. From the very beginning of my organization, we have advocated for civil rights, human rights, women's rights, every right you could think of, we have advocated for, and we have gotten laws passed. So we have to advocate for ourselves, with Chuck. We are important. We are the voice of the UN for the American citizens of this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Fannie. Please.
Hello. How am I doing? Okay. I'm Madeline Labriola, PAX Christi International. I've been a NGO representative for 10 years. I can't believe it, but it's true. But my organization's been around, I think, at least 40 as a NGO. It's very interesting to me to hear the word advocacy, because I think if I have to put what I do in one, it would be advocacy for the UN in the international community. Because when I go to briefings, I often write articles for our international newsletter and our USA newsletter. And I don't know how many touches, but I feel like I'm advocating for the work that's being done here and the issues that are being brought up, which, for a lot of people, are very daunting, very confusing. My friends say, "What do you do?" I often say, "I'm not sure, but I'm working hard at doing the best I can." When I first came here, the NGOs often said, "We're fighting for our right to be heard at the UN." This was 10 or 11 years ago. And I guess we're still fighting for that same right, that, for some reason, the governmental or the governments, they must be afraid of us or something, because they don't let us speak that often. So... But I really appreciate everyone coming up and talking about how important the UN's been to them, and especially the idea that this is what's been handed to us. Can we make it work for us anyway? That's the challenge. So we'll keep working as hard as we can, and PAX Christi, with over 100,000 members throughout the world, would feel really sad if there was no NGO to represent them at the UN. And I think all of you will feel the same way, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Lois Gada, and I'm with...
Could you use the microphone?
Hello. I'm Lois Gada, and I'm with AARP International. And of course, our interest is quality and quantity of life. Volder people, we know that. My question is, we all come to this briefing in every place. We all come to these events with a long history of professionalism and skills. Would the UN entertain any idea of having professional volunteers without salary staff some of their jobs that they, or offices that they don't want done, just running a briefing? Several of us have been in TV, several of us have handed out brochures, signed up people. They could save money by using volunteers and still get the same performance, I think.
Thank you. Frances?
Thank you. I'm Frances Zeinig, and I'm a member of the Executive Committee. And I've also worked for over 31 years at the United Nations. So I would just like to clarify a couple of things. Not, I will be expressing my opinion, but just to let you know what happens at the UN. First of all, and I think Sarah will back me up, there are two kinds of NGOs at the UN. There are those that have consultative status with ECOSOC, which I think many of you have. And they are the ones that actually play an advocacy role. The NGOs that are related, associated...
Hello, I'm Lois Gada, and I'm with--
Could you use my phone?
Hello, I'm Lois Gada, and I'm with AARP--
Hello.
Okay, got it. Hi, I'm Lois Gada, and I'm with AARP International. And of course, our interest is quality and quantity of life. Bolder people, we know that. My question is, we all come to this briefing in every place--
But--
We all come to these events with a long history of professionalism and skills. Would the UN entertain any idea of having professional volunteers without salary staff some of their jobs that they, or offices that they don't want done, just running a briefing? Several of us have been in TV, several of us have handed out brochures, signed up people. They could save money by using volunteers and still get the same performance, I think.
Thank you. Frances?
Thank you. I'm Frances Zeinig, and I'm a member of the Executive Committee. And I've also worked for over 31 years at the United Nations. So I would just like to clarify a couple of things. Not, I will be expressing my opinion, but just to let you know what happens at the UN. First of all, and I think Sarah will back me up, there are two kinds of NGOs at the UN. There are those that have consultative status with ECOSOC, which I think many of you have. And they are the ones that actually play an advocacy role. The NGOs that are related, associated with DPI are concerned with information. I think many of you have already mentioned that, that passing the information on to our organizations and elsewhere. Technically, DPI does not have an advocacy role. I have sat in many meetings at the UN where governments were absolutely adamant about DPI being a purely information, public information organization. They do not advocate for anything. So I'd actually be rather interested in knowing what they're going to put in their budget concerning advocacy, because there will be discussions. Certainly, I think it's in May, when the Advisory Committee on Budget Questions will be reviewing the budget, questions will be asked about that, and certainly in the Fifth Committee in October, November, December this year. So we have to be very attuned to those, that distinction. First of all, also, DPI addresses many issues. NGO issues is only part of DPI's program. So DPI is not concerned just with NGOs. I think, yes, it was really not a good thing that DPI did not consult with us in terms of their future program. The Secretary General at the highest level is not required to consult with people, quote, "NGOs" outside the organization, what's going to happen. But I just want to say again that the Executive Committee, I don't believe, has ever participated in the preparation of DPI's budget. So why should we expect that this time? But as I said, as a courtesy, it would have been nice knowing, you know, certain positions, key positions are going to be cut. I agree with those, especially Deb, I think, who said that we have to move on to see how we can collaborate with DPI. I think that's the way we should be going. It's a foregone conclusion already. The budget has been prepared, it has been approved by the Secretary General for submission to member states. There's nothing we can do about the budget cut at this point. The Secretary General has been asked by member states, mainly the major donors, of course, to cut the UN budget by $100 million for 2014, 2015. So DPI is only one of the departments that has suffered major, major cuts. And I think it's a lot more than 100,000 for the whole department, by the way. I certainly am on the list to receive the proposed budget of DPI, which should be coming out in April. So we can all see from the budget document what sort of activities are being proposed. The thing about, the trouble I think we're having is that even though it's not in writing, we've been assured that nothing is going to change, you know, that-- We really have, you know, a way to criticize. Furthermore, the budget is for 2014, '15, doesn't affect this year, except for the fact that the decisions upon retirement, they will probably not be filled. But I think it's absolutely crucial that we do collaborate with DPI in going forward to see what we can do. I have also heard informally that the new structure and the new program on advocacy, which I'm not sure they'll be able to keep that word, will be thinking about new ways to collaborate with us, not just briefings. And I think we've all complained about the fact that we haven't been involved too much in the preparation of conferences. This is one of the issues that we should pursue, that we as NGOs will have a voice in the preparation of conferences. And we need to do that by establishing a good relationship. We have a good relationship through Maria Luisa Chavez. Now, why that did not go through to the upper echelon, I don't know, but we need to find a way to be involved with the upper echelon. So better collaboration is absolutely essential. The only other way I see about budget cuts is that during October, November, December, when the Fifth Committee reviews the budget, we need to contact-- --the budget cuts. That would be the only way to change anything, would be towards October, November, December. We speak to friendly member states to say, "In the DPI budget, by the way, there's been a reduction in this area, please support the NGOs." So that is one avenue. The other thing is that when we talk about lack of access, difficulty in reaching member states, Chuck is right that the Capital Master Plan has had a major impact on this access. But at the same time, member states tell the Secretary General, "Get the NGOs out of here," or whatever. It's not the Secretary General. I really want to say that a lot of the reason for lack of access and whatever is really what member states have dictated. So it's not, quote, "The UN," it's the other part of the UN. It's those who pay the bills. And when they pay the bills, the Secretary General has to listen. Unfortunately, this is reality. So I do urge that we go forward by seeing what is going to happen. We've been, things are not going to change. We've got the rest of the year to monitor and chalk up everything that has changed. It shouldn't change, actually, because this proposal is for the next two years, not for this year. So we need to monitor all that very closely. And I think that-- --if we have a better dialogue with DPI, it would help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Frances. And let me just clarify a couple of things. One is that Gale's position will be filled. When, we don't know, but they've sent out a letter asking for people to send their resumes in for that position. Maria Luisa's position will not be filled, as we understand it, from the end of August till the end of December. So that position will simply go unfilled for that period of time. John, and then I think we need to try and figure out what we want to do next. So, John, if you could speak to us.
How's that?
That's--
Okay. John German represents several different NGOs, you know, the current one that actually made it through the 2012 Annual Review, closed the gap, Belgium, does computer donations around the world. A couple of things. You know, the basic reason that I wanted to say something here is to get something on the table, which is the value proposition. You know, let me give you a little background. You know, I originally got here in the 80s, you know, because of doing work with a major disabilities organization. And that culminated, you know, the high watermark, you know, not a new, the bar has not been raised, this was a high watermark, was the five years of negotiations in which I actively participated at the UN, which led to the unanimous, you know, vote in favor of the adoption of the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. Five years of negotiations. And during that five years, in Conference Room Four in the conference building, the largest one, it became, in the great Brazilian expression, "Screamingly obvious" that the only people in the room who knew what they were doing in that room, you know, on the issue of disabilities, were the nongovernmental organizations, the civil society organizations. We had representatives from every major disabilities organization on the planet. And all you had to do was look around the room, and you saw, you know, those who had physical evidence of their disabilities, you know, it was impossible to miss. And, you know, the member states' delegations quickly realized that they didn't know what they were doing in that field, and that the only people in that room who knew what they were doing were the NGOs. This is what I mean by the value proposition. You know, what happened there was that, you know, the, and one of the catalysts, by the way, was an organization that sponsored The Daily Reporter, you know, which was a journalistic effort to document what was going on in the room, and which highlighted things that needed to be highlighted, you know, and didn't do any shaming, but it did a lot of naming. You know, and that and the NGOs in the room turned it, that whole issue was dead on arrival. There was no way that that thing was ever going to get done. But thanks to the NGOs in the room, you know, that reporter effort and the Mexican delegation, which really spearheaded the thing, you know, it went on to be unanimously adopted. And Kofianen said in front of another audience in Conference Room Four, that that was one of the highlights of his 10 years in office. And that thing was dead twice. It was dead on arrival, and it was dead right before it was adopted, you know, and it was rescued by the NGO efforts. The value proposition was screamingly obvious. Now, the question about budgets is, you know, that any organization is faced with allocation decisions. It has more than one thing that it's trying to do. It has goals, objectives, you know, metrics, and, you know, and it makes allocations decisions. This gets more, this gets less, you know, this, you know, we see the value of that we don't see the value of. So since the 2012 Annual Reviews came up with the, you know, the December surprise of, you know, having had the goalposts moved and without telling anyone in advance that DPI was going to do that, resulting in NGOs that had been accredited here since the proverbial year of the flood, you know, suddenly finding out that their 2012 Annual Reviews were not, were not approved, you know, and nobody told them that this year's criteria were going to be any different from past year's criteria, so why should they pay any more attention to that compliance form than they ever did in the past? And they submitted the thing, and it didn't get approved. Then, suddenly, I got very interested in, well, just what was it that they were supposed to be doing? And so I went back and looked at all the obvious things, like reading every word on the DPI NGO website, you know, to see what it said the civil society organizations accredited to DPI were supposed to do. And there's surprisingly little that's there. In fact, you know, there was a lot less there than I expected, because over the years, there have been various memos, you know, all of which are now lost to history, because they can't be found, they can't be Googled, they can't be found on the DPI NGO website. I can't go back in my email inbox, which is my entire memory at this point, with full text search and find them, because, you know, a lot of things were put into attached files, and you can't search an attached file from an email inbox. So essentially, all that stuff is lost. So, you know, I saw very little as to what we were actually supposed to be doing, you know, which would give any clues as to how the value of what we're doing was going to be perceived, measured, and weighed. So, you know, in that absence, you know, I thought, well, all right, let's look at something else. I keep a daily watch on what's going on, you know, in the UN, you know, the UN's worldwide intranet on ISIC. And, you know, so I knew that the senior managers' compacts had been published in years past, and I went back and found Kyoakasaka's, you know, goals, you know, which were very neatly laid out, you know, gave those to Chuck. And then, you know, when Peter Alonsky Tifantals were published, you know, I think it was about a month ago, you know, immediately gave those to Chuck, you know, and pointed out that there are several there, you know, where clearly they're about NGOs. There's one that says something like, you know, "We're going to have 1,300 NGOs." I don't know how many there are, you know, that are actually registered, but that's the number that's in Peter Alonsky Tifantals' goals. That looked to me like a softball number. I'm sure they've got more than that already. No? Less?
About 1,300 that are affiliated, about 500 that are actually up to date.
Uh-huh, okay. But anyway, his goal says 1,300. You know, so--
ECOSOC. We need to come to a conclusion here, so--
Right. So the conclusion, you know, which is very simple, is that's Peter Alonsky Tifantals' goals, you know, which say very little about the NGOs, there's something there. But we need to go down one layer to the Outreach Division, which is Maher-Nasser, you know, and, you know, if we don't know what his goals are, how are we supposed to support them? You know, how are we supposed to show that we have any value at all? And we go down one more layer and get down to NGO relations, if we don't know what the goals are at that level, how are we supposed to support them? Why should they even have NGO relations section? Why not get rid of the whole thing? You know, I mean, what is our value? I don't know what it is. I don't know what we're supposed to be doing. What are the metrics? We had a wonderful session a few years ago, you know, where somebody from the metrics area of DPI gave a wonderful presentation, and I suggested to Chuck, you know, some time ago, that we get that person back, or that section back, to give some clue as to how is our value perceived, how is our value measured, what would they like to see us do, how can we help them look good? I always try to make bosses, you know, people look good to their bosses, you know, because if you want to get help and collaboration from somebody, if you can make them look good to their boss, probably they're going to be more helpful to you than if you don't do that. So how do we make the NGO relation-- --section look good to-- Peter Alonsky Tifantals, how do we make him look good, you know, to his peers, you know, and superiors and to the member states? If we don't answer those questions, I don't see a future. Thank you.
Thank you, John. In terms of time at this point, I'd like to see if we could begin to see if we can come to some conclusions, so that you can guide us in terms, the Executive Committee in terms of where we're going. So there are, these are the possibilities that I see. One is to continue with the process that has been initiated by DPI and see where that leads us. A second possibility would be in terms of what Frances suggested, and that is to encourage NGOs to write to their missions, the ambassadors to the UN, in terms of the Fifth Committee. And that obviously is the place where we could make a difference in terms of our funding. In the past, I know that Maher-Nasser has said that he has received funding as a result of pressure put upon governments who have then put pressure on the Fifth Committee to change. He's less sanguine about this happening in this period of reduced funding, but nevertheless, that remains a possibility. There is a third possibility of putting a petition online to the 1,400 NGOs that are associated with DPI, and asking them to affirm the fact that we want to go to the Secretary General with as many petitions as we possibly could have, stating that we want that position reinstated. Now, is there a fourth or a fifth possibility? Could we? Let me come on up.
Joan Davis, Gray Panthers. I'm not sure exactly, but it seems to me that what John German has just alluded to would substantiate whatever we want and whatever we need. So I would say that perhaps a subcommittee on the side to research that, to perhaps include that in a petition. Is it clear? You look puzzled. I know, it adds more work to what is already seems like a troublesome thing. And I, somebody said that we ought to go to-- And I, somebody said that we ought to go to ambassadors friendly nations. I am a resident of what I consider an unfriendly nation to the UN. My apologies. What can I do? I can't help you where I was born. I think we need, in all the time we've been here, I don't ever remember, aside from going to briefings where they told us what was happening, I don't think we've ever had a committee of organized, and we are an intelligent, informed bunch of people, to go to the U.S. mission and say, "This is what we like and we don't like your bashing us and we don't like what, how you say and do things." I would like that to be something that the NGO committee, executive committee encourages. I gird up my loins to be part of it. I'm sure everybody needs to be encouraged.
Thank you, Joan. And indeed, if we did send letters to the missions, we would have mock letters online and we would also do some of what Bella Absut did before, was to encourage people to learn how to approach the missions in a way that would be positive rather than negative in that point. In fact, we haven't heard from this young woman, so...
Would you say, I was thinking you said, right, you didn't mention having a delegation from the executive committee to work with DPI now, from now until December on the non voluntary phase?
Well, that was the first possibility that I mentioned, that we would live with the status quo that is present here and where it took us.
Well, and asking where it took us. Specifically ask DPI to work with a delegation.
All right. And that's in a sense what that, the letter to Peter did, was that one possibility would be indeed that.
Okay. So Shelley Desatage, St. George East Branch Association of Village and Community Councils. And I wanted to, I think we're thinking along a similar line. When I heard you say, "Continue with the DPI process," I saw that as a very passive approach. And what I'd like to propose is that we ask that the executive committee have a role in defining the job description for the incoming head of the advocacy and special events. I know a higher letter went out already prior to this, but goals get set every year. And if we can have a voice in the goals for the person in that position, then that, I think, will put us in a stronger stead. So I wanted to just modify that first part.
Yes, I just wanted to make the comment that when we met with Jeffrey Bres, it was quite apparent that he didn't have a clue about who the executive committee was or who the people were. And we tried to assure him that we were a group of intelligent, dedicated volunteers and that we are a resource for them rather than a problem. So we're hoping that within the next couple range of meetings, we will be able to involve ourselves a little bit more since he understands now what we represent. And we emphasize to him that we are the link to civil society and that was our mandate. So I want you to be assured that when we represent you, we're representing you as the strong group of people who can be an asset rather than a problem, which is the way I think they've been talking about us. What are we going to do about this committee? So now we have to tell them. And with, I just want to assure you that that's what we're doing. And Chuck's suggestions, I think, make a great deal of sense and we're going to act upon it.
Could you read it one more time? You know, I think that we've got to tell them that what we want to be doing as opposed to what we think they want us to be doing and finding out what they want us to do. I went to a meeting some time ago, it was down at the old auditorium, and somebody got up there and talked about the value of the NGOs. That person who was an ambassador said, "The value of the NGOs is that they're able to say things that we're not allowed to." And so if we think our job is to figure out how we fit in to the way the UN operates, I think we're approaching it from totally the wrong direction. I think we've got to come at it from the fact that we represent the voices of people who are outside the UN and we would, we're coming in to make our voice more powerful for the future as opposed to figuring out how to make it less powerful. All right. Now let's put the alternatives in different words than that. The first alternative would be for the NGO DPI executive committee to work with DPI to make sure that our position within DPI is as strong as possible, given the budgetary concerns. A second possibility would be to have letters sent to the missions urging them to return the line in the Fifth Committee hearings, which would be October, November, December. A third possibility would be to have a petition online asking for the NGO Relations Chief position to be restored and that the results of those petitions would be taken to the Secretary General. So, in a sense, you could vote for all of them if you wanted to at that point. I would like to do a straw vote so that we have some sense, and that's why I asked for everybody who was affiliated, associated with DPI to be in the front and for non-associated people to be in the rear. So if you could sort of, if there are people in the rear who are associated, if you could come forward, and if there are people in the front who are not associated, you could move back, it would help tremendously in terms of counting votes. Victoria, could you come forward? And if I could ask Anne Marie Carlson and Joan Levy. Joan, if you would take this side and count, and Anne Marie, if you would take this side and count, I would appreciate it. Now, having chaired a number of faculty meetings, I know that when it comes time to vote, there's always a question as to what you're going to vote on. So, do we need to make that clear again? Do you want to hear your options again? Okay. Joan?
Just to add a thought on what you're seeing all of the above.
All right. We can certainly do that as well. So the first possibility would be to work, have the NGO DPI executive committee work within DPI to establish our role and rather than to be a passive process, make this an active process. The second possibility would be to send letters to missions, asking them to reinstate the position of NGO Relations Chief in the Fifth Committee. Third possibility would be to have a petition online, the results then taken to the Secretary General. And the fourth would be all of the above.
I'm sorry, the petition exactly.
Place the NGO Relations Chief position.
Chuck?
Yes.
Can I talk?
Frances?
Just to clarify, Chuck, I don't think that is going to work because the Secretary General has already decided on the budget. And I'm petitioning him to change his mind and put back that post is not feasible nor practical and not a useful petition.
I think the people, I think the people who wanted that as a possibility saw that as a way of encouraging the UN to look more closely at the role of NGOs, rather than to see it as a salvation. It is a, an effort to get them to relook at the NGO role. Last name is B.R.E.Z. He is the Chief of the Advocacy and Special Events Section.
Is that a reverse asking the Secretary General to reverse his decision? I agree with you, Jessica. You can take the role and use another word of the job and say that we need this kind of a role and just change the word.
Okay. I understand. Yes, ma'am.
Are we voting on each position of all of them at the same time?
You can vote on each position. So you can vote four times if you wish. Joanne?
The question is, the Korean, Korean shebang has certain status. When we went to a conference and we had speaker, we had difficulty because she had the status from the UN, she could go and speak to persons, whereas we, an NGO, don't have that same status of being a member of the United Nations. We are linked between that. She helped us so that we could be able to have the most influential speakers at our conferences and because of that, we have had declarations and have launched a security council. And so without that level of position, we lack that. That denies us a voice, a link with the United Nations and the civil society of the world. And that's what that position gives us. It gives us the strength. We have a committee. And that committee, Jeffrey Bres, who isn't? He doesn't even, his description, he's working with, they didn't even tell him that he's going to work with the executive committee of people who represent civil society. That again denies us our ability to make that link with the UN. We open their eyes all the time. He has 70% of the people, she said, the latest speaker said, like the UN. But I come down on the train, people are like, "What does the UN do? At the UN, what about Siri? What about this? What about that?" But because we go back with the information from the briefings, we tell them, we're able to speak to them. You speak to millions of people in your NGOs, millions that you represent. That's the world. And don't let them forget that. Don't let them deny us that right and that position that opens up our conferences. She won in 2065, NGOs. Nobody else did that. Because of her position, she was allowed to go into these places and she built us even greater, even when we had white collar.
Joanne, take a deep breath. People are just innocent.
So much debt that you represent millions, so let them restore that position. Don't let them forget that.
Sister Rita?
Chuck, could we clarify that if all of them are...
We could vote for all of them. Right. So are we ready to vote? All right.
We'll incorporate it, certainly, if we, that will be a part of the first one.
All right. There's a question about the first one, and it's Myrna, right? Myrna's amendment to the first one, and that was, you know, on John's issues of how can we work with DPI in order to make sure that we, in a sense, can help set the guidelines for what is expected for us rather than those to be told to us.
Well, John said that we're not just being told anymore, so...
Well, in a sense, we're being told, but in a sense, we're not being told the whole thing. So I think...
It's not an amendment, it's an additional.
It's an additional to that first one, yeah. Okay.
So who does he say?
John, could you write out?
No, it's not John. It's this woman right here. That was responding to Frances. Frances, do you want to say this again? Frances, do you want to make your statement again, please?
Frances, yeah, would you please make your statement again?
About budget cover?
Yes.
I'm just saying that it's too late to push the Secretary General to change his mind or whatever. I think the point that was made was that we should express our concern or our NGO or whatever, persuasion, whatever, that we certainly cannot opt in to change his mind.
Right.
We had our meeting on with Maria when we shadowed at the time. We should have been told earlier about it and maybe we should, we could have done something with the Senator before the budget was put together.
Correct.
To express our concern, but we weren't involved and so we lost that opportunity. So absolutely, I don't believe we can outsource it to the President, which is the state of the country.
Just pleasure, right. Okay. So then, the four possibilities would be to continue to work with DPI, to help them with our role within DPI.
The position is as strong as possible.
Yes, thank you, Joan. The second one would be then to have letters sent to missions in relationship to the Fifth Committee in terms of restoring the position.
Letters sent by whom?
By NGOs.
But you can't do it by...
No, it has to be NGOs. It would have to be NGOs. The third would be a petition online expressing our dismay about the process that would then go to the Secretary General. And the fourth possibility would be simply all of the above. John?
Well, the third one, whether it be eligibility requirements or assigned a petition, well, one voice I'm concerned of is the voice of the NGOs that are not here.
It would, that's why I said the petition would be online.
Right. Who is allowed to sign a petition?
Anybody who is associated with NGOs. It would go out to them. Okay? George?
On that petition, wouldn't it be better to have one signature per NGO?
If we could let that decision be made by the executive committee, I think it would be helpful. Okay? We're trying to come to a decision because we've got to move ahead, Joan.
The question of privacy, the NGOs, is it only DPI or ECO SOC can, can people signing the petition be ECO SOC as well?
Well, originally, we said the petition could be signed by DPI and if ECO SOC through Cyril Ritchie wanted to sign on, they could. All right, Judy and then Joan.
One of the things that troubles me during some discussion is I said, "Is anybody listening? Is anybody listening?" I don't think so. And I think that maybe from an American activist point of view, I don't care whether they have that budget. Obama and they are having a lot of trouble. They have a budget too. And we truly be afraid to say that budget is not too much.
Okay, good. Again, we're looking for, to clarify what we're voting on rather than to make references. Joan?
One person, one decision, whether it be a petition or a...
Right.
Yeah. I have to say, I have to vote to get...
Right. All right. Now are we in a position to vote? Okay. All those in favor of the first proposition, which would be to, all right, you don't need it read one more time. All those in favor of the first proposition, please raise your hands. Joan and...
Look at that, the move while you're thinking out.
How many? Yes, please.
I feel we also have to decide who's counting what rules.
Oh, from this, from the middle division over and the middle division this way?
That was when the middle division, we don't have these rules.
Well, there's no reason to vote against. It's just...
It's just simply who's for.
It's if we need the voting. Nineteen on your side.
How many, nineteen? How many from your side?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. And did you, anybody count the people up here?
I see the answer is voting.
All right, two more.
Did she count that, too?
Yes, she did. So that's 46. In terms of sending letters to missions, asking them to vote in the fifth committee, please raise your hands.
Do you think they'll vote on the news?
There are no votes.
Fourteen for this half.
How many?
Well, I have, no, the second one, I have twelve.
Twelve. Thirty altogether. The third one, a petition online, the results to be submitted to the Secretary General, please raise your hands.
These are all possible avenues, yes.
Fifteen? Anybody up here voting? I'm sorry, Joan, how many did you have? Yeah. Again, thirty. All those in favor of the fourth possibility, which would be to vote, to do all four of the things mentioned?
Yes, this is it. Okay.
Fourteen for this half.
Okay. I thank you very much, and that certainly will give us information to carry back to the executive committee in terms of where we're going. Now, the other thing that we need to talk about very quickly.
Well, we'll take back, yeah, we'll take back to the executive committee.
All right, the second part of the process then is to talk about the conference. We met with Maher, and he suggested that we consider having a conference in September here in New York. And yes, for a subcommittee on the feasibility of that conference to be established, the executive committee elected Mary Norton, Fannie Mullen, and myself to represent the NGO community. And Maria Luis Chavez and Jeffrey Brez represents the NGOs. We met yesterday, and after a rather detailed conversation, it was felt that it wasn't possible to put together a conference for September. We are looking about the possibility of doing one in December. The issue has to do with space more than anything else. With the UN in session at that point, would we be able to get enough space, both in terms of when we would have a opening and closing ceremony? So we're talking about a smaller conference where we would expect maybe 800 to 1,200 people rather than the 1,500 to 1,800 people we ordinarily played host to here at headquarters. Part of the question is whether there'll be space for our workshops and to have 20 to 25 workshops rather than the 30 to 35 that we've had in the past. So people have all gotten assignments as to people to talk to about space allotments, and we will get back together around the Fourth of February to determine indeed if it's possible to do it in December.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Absolutely mind drift there. I apologize. Let me finish just one, Mariella, quickly. If indeed we find that it's not possible, then we set ourselves a deadline. The deadline would be that we would work between now and September 1st to identify a host country for 2014. And we have a list of countries that we have prioritized. They are Hungary, Morocco, South Korea, Turkey, and Romania. So if any of you have possibilities for us, would you please see us afterwards? That would be great. There are ongoing discussions with Canada at this point, so we're not sure where that will lead us. Let me go to Mariella first and then to you.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I'm not going to carry on at Rutgers University. I think a lot of people are going to be coming this year, but I could make sure that Rutgers could host that conference in New Jersey, which would be, sorry. It would, if you are considering a conference for this year, September or December, that Rutgers University, I'm sure, would have the facilities available to host it.
Our problem with that is that if we go outside of headquarters, then we have to have the American government host the conference. And we've been told informally by the person who was the representative to the NGO community from the US mission that there wasn't that possibility in terms of budget commitment. So we thank Rutgers tremendously, but...
Okay, I know that they would be interested and offer it.
Now, I'm sorry, Joan, behind you, there's a woman in a red jacket.
I work for Fundación Global de la Democracia de Suruio, and we're a think tank that was founded by the former president of the Dominican Republic. So with that said, I was going to mention the possibility of perhaps the Dominican Republic hosting it, but I'm not sure if you've already closed your list of countries you're considering.
We'll certainly put that country down.
Okay, thanks.
Dominican Republic. Now, Joan?
I hate to be controversial. I think it's about time we said to the United States, certain things are unacceptable. You know, and we pay them, we pay taxes, and we have a say, and maybe it would make a few headlines that would be useful. I'm not sure that that's the best word, but anyhow, I don't think that, because Rutgers is prestigious.
Could I speak to you afterwards? Yeah. Okay. John?
Is that, you know, the thing about needing host country government sponsorship, is that just needing host country government money or is there something else?
They have to sign a document, and that document says that they will provide certain services. Services that will either be provided in kind, as Mexico did, or in terms of a cash outlay, as Australia did.
Okay, but we don't need them for permission. We just need them for money, is what you're saying? Money or some other resource?
Money or the equivalent.
Okay, so if it's not a resource issue, then we don't need them, right?
We do need them because they have to sign a petition, they have to sign an agreement that they are willing to host that conference.
But only if we ask them to provide resources.
No, the hosting is more complex than just the resources.
That's what I wanted as an answer. Do we need them for something? We need them for something more than resources.
Right.
Okay, which I don't understand, but that's all right.
Okay, the next thing we need to have a sense about is that in the past, Jackie has asked for suggestions for topics, and the topics that have been voted on in the past were immigration, peace, education, youth. Are there other issues? Are there other themes that you would like to see addressed at this point?
Climate.
Sorry?
Climate.
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 We did learn that during 2007.
I know. Well, Jerry?
What a future United Nations should look like.
What is that?
What a future United Nations should look like.
Culture.
I'm sorry?
Culture.
Culture, peace, all right. Jackie?
Oh, 2015, and then the...
Good.
Deborah?
The conference, the relationship between civil society and the United Nations.
Any other suggestions? All right, this has been helpful. We said we would get you out of here by 3 o'clock. It's 5 of 3. So on behalf of the executive committee, we thank you very much for all of your participation today. Downstairs.
December. If we can find space. That has to be determined by the 11th.